Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for April the 22nd. We are meeting at 6:30 PM in the Harry Butters Selectmen's Chambers at Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street in Norwood. And this meeting is being recorded for rebroadcast for the general public by Norwood Community Media. And I would like to start us off with our traditional Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Sideline.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a couple of appointments. You'll notice that we've had made a minor adjustment. We had one appointment cancellation and so we've moved two of the later appointments up by a couple of minutes because they were available. But before we have our first appointment step in, we have a moment and I'd like us to go ahead and knock out item number one, which is the warrant signature update. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the warrant as submitted.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. All right, and we're basically at time. I'll mention one thing before we get down to it, which is tonight, I'd like to have us try again that consent agenda format for some of the new business. So, um, once we get a little gap, we'll move into that. But it's the same procedure as last time. I'll be reading off the list and then if you see something that you want to have deeper discussion on, just call for hold and then we'll set that aside. I know I have a couple of holds myself tonight, so I'm not too worried about it. But instead, we're going to start off with our appointments because I believe that our first appointment, both chiefs are here. If you take a guess, so let's go ahead and have you come on in.
Hello.
Hello, welcome back. Good to see you. Thanks for coming in tonight. And for, although most of us all know you, just for the benefit of folks watching in the future, if you can go ahead and introduce yourselves and then we'll get right into it.
My name's Chief Christopher Patton. Chief, please.
Excellent.
Timothy Bailey, Chief of the Fire Department.
All right. Who would like to start first tonight?
I'll start first.
Start with Chief Bailey, very well.
Thank you and good evening. As I always start off with our, the last time I was here was on February 11th. Our call volume to date is 2,079, roughly 19.45 emergency calls per day. That's about the same as we were at last year. So staying at even with that pace. Our fire prevention numbers, last year we started our fire prevention, we started recording all of our fire prevention activities and for the year last year, from April to the end of the year, we were at 2818 because we were four months late getting into it. This year in the first four months, we're at 2,014. So, our efforts have been really pushed towards doing a lot more fire prevention and that is actually showing in the numbers. So, mutual aid we've given, since the first of the year, we've given 41 times, we've received 198. So we continue to receive a lot of mutual aid into town, predominantly the ambulances. Only our ambulances are tied up. Training, the Blue Carrot ICS training is continuing. I've mentioned that several times. That's a long process. We've done all of the online portion. We're just waiting to schedule the 24 hours of in-person training, which we'll be doing later on, end of May, early June is what I'm hoping to get that done. I attended a class on strategy and tactics for solar panels and battery storage at the Mass Fire Academy, as well as a class on managing fires in two and a half story wood房and dwellings. I also attended the Health and Wellness Symposium at Florian Hall, given by the International Association of Fire Chiefs. That was very informative and we'll be bringing some of that back to the station. I'm involved in several things throughout the state with regards to the Fire Chiefs Association. I'm on the Board of Directors and I'm also the Legislative Chair. But one of the other things that I am is I'm the Hazmat Advisory Board Chairman and we had our annual conference at Gillette Stadium a couple of weeks ago and that was very well attended by all the hazmat techs and it was an excellent venue to have it at. Apparatus, our ladder truck continues to be a problem. Our ladder truck is still out of service. It has been out of service now for approximately two and a half months, back and forth with different vendors trying to get it repaired. It is currently back with a company that the manufacturer recommended to go back to because they're the ones that actually make the transmission. That went back today and I'm hoping to have answers on that by the end of the week. So, it is, it's real concerning to me that we haven't been able to get it back at this point. Engine three, as I mentioned before, has been ordered. There's no updates on that. Grants we've received, the fire safety equipment grant that we received back in November, we've gotten all the equipment for that grant, so that grant will be closed out, has to be closed out before June 30th. We were also able to get another grant on a second round that also has to be done before June 30th. We just got the money for that, so we'll be processing that as we move forward and trying to get that equipment in as well. We were also awarded our SAFE grants, which are an annual grant that we get as long as we do all of our reporting requirements. So the SAFE grant, which is for the students, for our fire education program there, we've got 7,200 for that and for our senior SAFE program, we've got 2,600. On personnel, we did interviews two weeks ago for two positions that are currently open within the department and we have offered conditional letters to two possible candidates. Mitchell Sanchez, who's in the Crewd Academy, will be graduating on May 2nd. And on the injury front, we still have two long-term injuries and we have another injury that just happened over the past week that I expect to be short-term, but I'll keep you up to date as we move forward. That's all I have.
Great. Before we move to Chief Patton, I think we'll take a moment here in case the board has any questions for fireside. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for being here, both of you. If you could just talk a little bit about what the impact is of having a ladder truck offline and unavailable and sort of the trickle-down of that and how that affects operations?
Sure. So, what we're doing in the interim is we're running a third engine is basically what we're doing. So, we still have the capability of using ground ladders, which we train on regularly. So, we can, the biggest ground ladder we have is 28 feet, so we can get to the second floor of most residences. Where it really impacts us is with commercial property and we rely on mutual aid for our ladder truck when we need it. So, what ends up happening is that call comes into the station and if the captain feels that a ladder truck is needed, he just makes the request to Norfolk County. They then in turn dispatch a ladder truck to our scene.
Based on?
But it is coming from out of town.
What type of building? You know, you make an assessment of the type of building and then?
So, any reported structure fire, whether it's residential or commercial, we're asking for a ladder truck. But on the others, if he feels he needs a ladder truck, depending on the situation, he would request it, so.
Hopefully?
It has impacted our service quite a bit.
Hopefully it comes back soon.
We are hopeful. I pulled it out of where it was a week and a half ago. We've had the best dialogue we've had in a while in the last week, so.
It's encouraging, yeah.
Hopefully we can get some answers.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, Chief. The ladder truck, is that going to be on the Capitol Parkway for a replacement?
Yes, it will be.
Okay. We're still looking at a long timeline for?
Three to three and a half years.
That's unbelievable, yeah, okay. I was wondering if the fact that you've mentioned that the mutual aid being received is 198, mostly ambulances, but I was just curious as to whether or not the ladder truck contributes to the mutual aid call, that having to call in a ladder truck from mutual aid?
A few of those are, I don't have the exact number, but like I said, predominantly of the 198, most of that is ambulances coming into town.
And in terms of the ambulance calls and the mutual aid, are we, to your knowledge, are we like an outlier that getting that much mutual aid or is this something that other towns are experiencing as well?
They are, but not to the level that we are.
Not to the level, so we're a little above the norm.
Our call volume is way higher than most of the towns around us, so we're the highest of everyone around us.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Our population isn't necessarily that much bigger than some of the towns around, is it? Because of an elderly population? What is the reason?
It's, I don't know exactly. Some of our, some of our, the mix that we have here in town, I mean, we have four nursing homes as opposed to none in some of the others. And then there's other variables, but it's just, we get a lot of accidents. This afternoon is a good example. We had several accidents all at once throughout town and had to utilize mutual aid for one of those as well, so. And another ongoing medical at the same time. So, when calls hit with us, they're not staggered per se, so you can get hit with five or six at once and it just totally takes away from our ability to handle them all at once. So, we do, but we have to spread our resources out, so.
And what about Route 1, 95?
We're out there frequently.
Yeah.
We're out there frequently.
That must be a real drive right there.
It is. It is. And that's a joint response with, depending on where it is on 95, it's either three or four towns, so, just because of access issues.
That's right. Well, absolutely. And Mr. Sam?
Chief, both of you, thanks for coming. You've got a great tan. I'm not sure if you're fishing or golfing, but?
Neither one.
Get out there. Keep up the great work and thanks for keeping us informed and the taxpayers and the town and keep it going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then my only comment tonight was, one of the things that I've become acutely attuned to is in the years before, when I would be doing civic work in town, say, you know, 2016, 2018, you'd be out here in the community and once in a while, you would see the department out and then since the loss of the hospital and then persisting until now, just always out, always out, always out. I feel like I'm seeing them every two seconds and so they're getting out there, but it's notable, the call volume. It's absolutely a huge noticeable increase even to a layperson, so. But we really appreciate the work as we know it's really tough right now, so we're going to keep working and pushing, pushing up and out to try to get that hospital back as fast as we can.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That'll help a lot.
Any further questions or comments before we move over to Chief Patton? All right. Chief, let's go ahead and hear from how things are going on the police side.
Before we jump into that, I'm just going to make the comment because Mr. Plasko asked. The Holbrook call volume of all the towns there, Norwood Police and Fire are by far the busiest towns there. I don't know what it is, but we have, our call volume is way over most of those, so I mean, you know, police and fire, nobody wants to sit on our desk because they're busy, you know? So, it's a busy time for them. Let me just kind of run through this past weekend, just because it was recent. We had a number of officers supporting the marathon and the Lexington and Concord events. We had five plainclothes officers working the marathon route, you know, basically looking for suspicious activity and things like that. We've been doing that for a number of years since the Boston Marathon bombing. Lots of cities and towns in the area, you know, because it's such a large space, helped to cover out the officers, especially trained to do that type of thing. We had two SWAT officers working in response cars in Newton, I believe they were posted. We had two more working the Lexington and Concord event the day before. That was, you know, obviously the 250th anniversary. It was a pretty big event. And then back here at home, Norwood, we also had a very busy weekend. We had multiple arrests and charges on a lot of different folks. We had a lot of juvenile crime this weekend. We had three kids down in South Norwood. We charged those with, you know, breaking and attempted breaking and entering. You know, folks were calling us for various things. We had another one with a simple assault. That was at Shaw's. We just had a busy, busy weekend. A lot of it stemmed around the Uptown and Shaw's area, but there was a little bit down in South Norwood, so that was unfortunate. And then, you know, we had two drinking and driving crashes over the course of the weekend. So with the spring weather comes a lot of activity. People are out and drinking goes up, so we have extra enforcement and extra patrols out to deal with that, unfortunately. We had a number of other items going on. Hang on one second, let me just get this over. I should have brought my notepad instead of using my phone.
No, that's fine.
Anyways, so we also had a lot of other issues that went on as far as over the last couple of months. Let me just pull up my notes, I apologize. I have a notepad that I usually bring, but this was?
Don't worry about it, I'm the same way.
This was more convenient. So, just as far as citations go, you know, because we're in that quarter, roughly around the quarter, we're at 2,156 and that's just showing, not that we're outriding tickets to everybody, but just shows the level of traffic enforcement we're trying to do. Last year, for the year, we ran to about 7,300. The 2,156 projects out to be about 8,600 this year. It's just a lot more. We have our officers out there. We're really trying to curb driving behavior issues and not so much to write tickets to fine people. A lot of times they're warnings or we just speak to the public. We're trying to change behavior. As far as arrests goes, currently to date, we're at 157. Last year, that total ended up being 402 for the whole year. At 157 right now, we project out to be about 628, so our arrest numbers are going to go up, I'm guessing, because this is the time of year where we actually get busier as spring and summer come. It's just the way it is. In addition to that, we're working on the five-year strategic plan for the police department internally. We're trying to get that up and running. We had two all police department meetings with everybody on hand to kind of go over, you know, what direction they saw the police, what we can do to basically become a better police department. Now we're in the phase where we're doing small group meetings, so each of those pillars that we identified, things like professional growth and professionalism and things along those lines, now we have small groups working on those to perfect them and then, you know, eventually we'll present that to you and to the town, you know, what our plan is, trying to get that long-term process going. It's a little bit of work, but it hopefully will pay off and we'll end up with a better We have extra traffic enforcement out, as well as extra walking beats in the Uptown and South Norwood area. More people are out, more police are out, so we're trying to, trying to get that going. And then, we just concluded our mandatory in-service, the state mandated for the year. Every officer has to do 40 hours and that roughly comes out to about 2,600 hours of training for the entire department. In addition to the mandatory training, we also send officers to a large amount of voluntary training, various classes that maybe they're interested in some investigatory tool. One of the ones we just sent a number of officers to was identifying the impostor. And what that does is a lot of people have false identification and they'll, they're very sophisticated and it allows the officers to use various tools to determine whether or not somebody is really who they say they are. So it's actually really an interesting class and we've been pretty successful with that. The only way for us to really sometimes tell who somebody is is if we arrest them and they fingerprint them and the fingerprint card comes back and we don't know who they are until those fingerprints come back. And sometimes they'll have two or three names. So this, this class was a good one. A couple of our officers have taken it two and three times because you learn something new every time. So we've just been in a real heavy training cycle and we've also been busy around town and supporting some of the other stuff that's going on in the city and the, in the area in general.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? Mr. Sam?
Chief Patton, great job, you and your department. Fishing derby on Saturday, if we could get some security for the big fish that are in there, that'd be great. Secondly, I think we saw a couple new recruits or?
Yeah, so we've hired, so it's a little bit of both. Over the last, it's probably about five or six months, we've had, well, some of our recruits were in the academy for a long period, it's a six-month academy and then it's a 12-week field training program. Some of those are starting to come out of the field training program. And I'll, I'll bring a bunch of them up here, maybe at the next meeting to meet, meet all of you. And then we also, when we had some other openings, we hired some lateral transfers. We got some real high-quality people from some other towns. With the most recent one, gentleman named Travis Dixon, he's a 15-year police officer. He was in Wellesley. He lives in Walpole. He wanted to move closer to home and we got very fortunate to get him. And there's a few others. So, we're, we're kind of mixing it up because the, we had such a large number and it really, when you have a brand-new police officer, it takes a solid five years before they really are kind of what I would call a journeyman police officer. And so for us to take in 10 new police officers is more than a large percent of our percentage of the department. And a lot of them are young and inexperienced and that's no knock, but you don't want them all at the same time. So we've been able to hire some really good laterals from other areas. Over the years, we've hired a couple sergeants from other towns that have come here as patrol officers, just because they came from a smaller town where there wasn't enough opportunity or growth or police work for them. So, we've been very fortunate here in Norwood.
Great job. One more thing, just a couple radars maybe in the both ends of South Norwood, because that pool is a real dangerous spot right now.
Yeah.
And it was an accident last Tuesday in front of, when I was coming up here, but they just seemed to go right through that red light or coming downhill, right through that red light and just like Coach Belichick, you know what you're doing, Coach.
Yep. No, we've, over the, over the period of the spring and specifically on the days, because the traffic is so much higher, we've taken one of our extra patrol officers off and put them on a full-time traffic assignment so that they're out there. Not that every other officer isn't doing traffic enforcement as well, but that officer's job is really to go from some of the places that we identify from accidents and things along those lines and just work their way through. And we try and keep them from having to answer calls so that they can concentrate on traffic enforcement.
Great job. Thank you, Mr. Matt Chairman.
Another question. Sir Donnelly?
Oh, thank you, Chief. So, great job with your recruitment and the personnel. So we met, I met Officer Travis a few weeks ago at the Space Center and my friends and I engaged in a nice conversation with him. He was really easy to talk to and he told us he came from, from the Wellesley Police Department and I think it's a good testament for your department, they are able to attract veteran officers from other communities. I mean, that's just a great deal. I think that shows that you, Norwood has a very good reputation for law enforcement, very professional organization and certainly I think it benefits the town where we can get veteran officers that, that already been through the training academy and are well-trained. So my compliments to you and your staff for your recruitment activities and, you know, I was just very pleased to have that conversation with the officer. Very well-engaged.
Yeah, he's a nice guy.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman. Just thank you for being here, thank you for the updates. It sounds like everything's going well. You had talked about identification and just thinking about the real IDs and is that a helpful thing for people to, to get that done sooner rather than later?
So the real ID issue doesn't really affect us on a local level.
Yeah.
I know this has been floating around for quite some time within the federal world saying that real ID was coming and I don't have one myself, but I?
I don't either.
I have a passport, so.
Me too.
So I think it really is mostly going to affect people when they go to travel. I know the difference between, you know, a real ID, you have to present certain documents and you, a lot of times, AAA is very helpful because if you're a AAA member, you can go up there and bring your birth certificate, your whatever type of bill or tax bill or something along those lines. And you got to take that extra step, whereas in years past, when your license expired, you could, every other license, you had to go get a new photo because you'd get older over eight years and, but I don't think it affects us really in any way, shape or form. The only real difference that I see on the identification is there's a star on there and it's really mostly about travel.
Yeah. So. Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right. And then the only, the only comment I was going to have for your visit today is just to let you know, the officers have been doing excellent work in terms of their digital footprint. We've been very impressed at sort of the place that we've come in terms of being able to claw back some of the issues around cryptocurrencies, just staying very up-to-date on how different online accounts are being used and just the knowledge pool there has been very good, so I've been very pleased by the work that we've been able to accomplish on that, so.
That area is moving so fast. We have wire fraud transfer and we have some guys that are so sharp on that that they have been able to recoup some of the money before, you know, a wire fraud, once it's out in that world, in the, in the electronic world, a lot of times it's just about gone.
Yeah.
And they've had, they know they have the right contacts, same thing with the crypto. One of the big scams that we have is, and this is an interesting concept, but we have people getting scammed for cash or told to go put the cash in a crypto ATM. And once the cash is in there, you know, you would think that we could go recover the cash, but you can't because it's, it's no longer there. It's, you bought crypto and now it's in the crypto world. So, it's, it's really interesting and our, our officers, we actually sponsored with the US Attorney's Office here at the Norwood Police Department and Norfolk County Detectives Association meeting to train everybody on how to do that, because a lot of times those folks are older people and they're losing $8,000, $10,000. The online scams and the phone scams and you probably have even gotten some of them, the toll one that you get on text. Our seniors are getting crushed on those things and it's, it's so frustrating. I'm up to Senior Center all the time saying, you know, we put it in our newsletter over and they're sick of hearing it, but then, you know, the grandparents scam, somebody calls, says, "Oh, Grandma, I'm in jail" and, and they swear it was their kid, their grandkid and then they lose $8,000 or $10,000 and that's a lot of money for them. So we really, really want to be on top of those.
Agreed, agreed. No, it's just been, it's been really, really helpful to have, you know, highly knowledgeable officers when we're sort of discussing some of these concepts that, you know, they're, they're really up to speed and it's been very impressive. I'm very pleased.
It's because we have a good training budget and because we have the capability to send those officers to those voluntary trainings?
Yeah.
That I was talking about.
Excellent.
Without that, we wouldn't have that. They wouldn't have that education and they wouldn't be able to help those people.
Yeah.
So it's super important.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for coming in to see us tonight and we look forward to seeing you again. You're doing excellent work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, so that has taken us right up to our next appointment. Yeah, so see Sam out there?
Yeah.
Excellent. Welcome, Sam.
Hey, how's it going?
Going good. How are you? Good to see you.
Good, thank you.
All right, and just for the benefit of the future people that will watch the rebroadcast, go ahead and introduce yourself to the public.
Great, yeah. My name is Sam White. I am the superintendent of the Recreation Department.
Excellent, thank you. Glad you could make it in, so we've been trying to make sure that we get some good FaceTime with everyone.
Yeah, definitely.
So, go ahead and present any updates you'd like for us.
Great, perfect. Well, I'll start off with the fun stuff first. Just this past week, we just concluded our glow-in-the-dark Easter egg hunt on Thursday, which was held right in the Civic Center. It was a great turnout and then just following down Saturday, we did have our, our main Easter egg hunt, which was right on Norwood High School front lawn with over 5,000 eggs, so it was a great turnout, great day, great, great time had by all, so no complaints there. I know last time I was here, I didn't really touch on just the Civic Center in general, so I just wanted to touch on that just with our members that we have coming in, our membership numbers that we have. Everyone that does come in our facility, they've been great, very respectful of the facility and, and it's great, great to talk to everybody. But we do have 1,035 active members and that's anywhere from middle schoolers to our seniors, so it's been great. I mean, I go down there in the mornings, I go down there in the afternoons and nights. I mean, it's, it's, it's been packed. It's been great, great to see. Our Fitness Center, we are doing a couple, we, we're doing some updates on some of our equipment, so we just recently purchased a new preacher curl, along with a recumbent bike, so trying to make a little additions, weeding out some of the old equipment and keeping, keeping it updated. And then just recently, we had a little situation in the Kennedy Room. The ceiling wasn't, wasn't upholding the way that it should, should have. The facilities department was great. They came right down, fixed it right up. We have new, new ceiling tiles, lights and sprinklers in the Kennedy Room, which is where our preschool prep program typically takes place. So, just a quick couple of updates on the Civic, but we're still, still intact, so it's great. Of course, too, some upcoming events that we do have this weekend, the fishing derby. Can't wait, looking forward to it. Can't wait, looking forward to it. It's going to be a great day. And then in the near future, on May 10th, we do have our dance recital coming up at the Norwood High School. So on another note, so for Haas Pool, I did want to give you all an update on that as well. I know a lot of people have been seeing the action that's been going down recently. So about a week and a half ago, unfortunately, the concrete was poured incorrectly in the splash pad. So they had to go back in, take it back out, redo the rebar, get the inspections back done. They're shooting to pour the new concrete in the near future. The date that they gave us was April 28th, so next week. But basically, what happened was the admixture of the concrete, there was an issue with the insulation. They overpoured, from what I've been told. And when the cure process happened, it cured too quick, so they weren't able to put in these control joints that were supposed to go in. So that was the big misunderstanding, a little bit of a hiccup. But, you know, we're staying hopeful, we're staying on top of them. And, you know, we're still aiming for that opening date of June 18th. And then in other news, too, with our Tyler J. Lawrence Memorial Park, we're still slated to do our grand opening on May 16th, which is a Friday at 1:00 PM. I do have a couple flyers to invite you all. I'll pass around here.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course, yeah. No, but we're looking forward to that date. And, yeah, it's going to be a great new location. It'll be the ninth program that the Recreation Department oversees, so we're very excited. And off that, too, we just had all of our playgrounds inspected throughout the town. So I'm actually waiting back. Hopefully by tomorrow, I'll get the report back to start updating some of the playgrounds around. We just ordered some mulch, put the mulch down in certain playgrounds. So, you know, spring is here, and summer's slowly approaching, so we're excited, so.
Excellent.
That's in a nutshell right now. I mean, I go on and on, too, real quick, too, actually. We had, we just had our interviews for our counselors for the summer. It was great, great numbers. We had like over 30 new applicants, so it was great. It's very competitive. I sat in on a couple of interviews. They're all fantastic. So, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a great summer. We're looking forward to it. On the other note, we are still looking for lifeguards. We offer, we're offering a free lifeguarding course. We're partnering with Westwood to use their pool in June, early June. We have 10 spots. We have about four full right now, so we're almost there. Six more, six more to go, but we do need lifeguards. And we're trying all of our efforts to get more lifeguards. And sometimes it is a slow process, especially as we get towards summer. But that's where we're at right now.
All right. Well, do we have any questions or comments from the board, Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, Mr. White. I think you mentioned on the Haas Pool, the concrete doesn't delay the planned opening for the, they're still on target for an opening in June, I believe.
June, yeah, June 18th. That's still our target. I'm hoping that it doesn't delay that, but right now, we're sticking to June 18th until we hear otherwise.
And the new concrete port, I would assume that's something the contractor will cover the cost for?
Correct, yes, correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
You're doing a great job. Thanks a lot.
And other, Mr. Sad.
Where do I start with you, Sam? Are you on the saw from throwing the fishing last week?
I was going to say, I mean, there was some big fish.
Yeah, thanks for all you do for that, and thanks for being the department head now. You're doing a great job. We'll come up with another great idea for you and another project I think have in my mind, but the town's lucky to have you.
Yeah, I'm happy to be here, happy to be here.
Rain or shine on Saturday.
Rain or shine. We'll bring the tents, we'll bring the table, everything will be there. Ducks will be flowing, we'll be good.
You're the best, thank you.
We'll be good.
Mr. Plasko.
If I was a betting man, I'd be betting against you down on the Haas Pool. I hope, I hope, I hope and hope that you're correct and that the contractor is going to be able to meet that date. But I look how long it's taken to get where they are and how much is left to go.
Yeah.
I really, I see it every morning, and every morning I shake my head concerned that it's going to happen, so they're still telling you they'll make it though.
Yeah, I mean, well, it's open-ended, but, I mean, I'm still staying confident until we do hear. Otherwise, we haven't, you know, made any flyers or anything official quite yet. But, I mean, the date is in the guide and everything, so staying hopeful for the 18th.
Some jobs suddenly, some jobs suddenly close up fast.
Right.
But when you look at it as a layman imagining what work they have left, I just shake my head saying, how are we going to make that date?
Yeah.
So, my fingers crossed for everybody.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely. And we, you know, we're still meeting with them every week, every Wednesday, we have our OAC meeting. So every week, we switch off, one's in person, one's virtual. So, you know, we have one tomorrow, of course, so, I mean, it's, we'll have more updates then as well. But, or just high hopes. Keep our fingers crossed.
Okay.
And then one question I have, because someone had asked me, and I didn't know the answer.
Yeah.
With the new park over at the airport, which is very exciting, right? Because we know that families love to watch aviation.
Yes, yeah.
It's so much fun, and this is going to be very excellent for them, because now they're going to have, the little ones have an even better view and just continue to keep them excited about aviation. But somebody had asked me about whether or not we need to put any consideration into restroom facilities, because if we have a higher attendance of families sort of all congregating. Like, it was different when there were one-off, one-off families coming and going. Now you have a place that sort of attracts, like, hey, come here.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we need to think about any sort of bathroom access for families? You know, if they need to change, or if they, you know, have a little one that, you know, can't hold it, or is that something that we had thought about?
For sure, yeah, and that's something we could certainly look into. I mean, that could be something, you know, seasonally, of course, putting up a porta potty or something. But yeah, no, that's a great point.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too, is maybe something seasonal, kind of like we do down on Central, you know, where it's like when we expect there to be high volume because of the nice weather, but then during the winter time, there's not going to be as much of that.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Excellent.
Yeah, we can get something up there.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right.
One more question.
Mr. Sad.
I know we have like a DPW sign that goes up for our things. But we don't put up for, help them out with the lifeguards wanted.
Yeah, that one would be anything that we can do, yeah.
We got that sign, so we could use it to realize some family.
Oh, maybe.
He needs the help.
Yeah, yeah. Anyone we can get, anyone we can get. And I will say, anyone over 16 years old, it doesn't matter, as long as you have the certification, we'll take you on.
And then just as a reminder for folks, where can they go to get a certification?
Yeah, so there's different locations around. I know the closest one is Dedham. And then I believe the Vanderbilt does, they do a Red Cross certification as well. So there are local areas where you can get certified. We're just trying to make it a little bit easier. Somewhere a little bit closer, somewhere a little towards the end of school year for folks to go, go and get it for free as well.
Excellent. All right.
Yeah.
If we have any other questions or comments, otherwise, I think we can let you go. And thank you so much for coming in to give us updates.
Great, thank you so much, thank you so much. And one more thing, too. Norwood Day applications are live. They went live April 1st.
All right.
We're looking forward to Norwood Day. We're already planning it.
So are we.
Getting everything, getting our ducks in a row.
Excellent, great. Well, thank you so much, Sam. We'll see you again soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So 7:15, we've got six or so minutes. Why don't I go ahead and we'll figure out which holds we're going to do on our new business. So my plan is to hold item 3.3, 3.4, and 3.5, whereas the other ones seem like things that unless someone has discussion on, we can just approve with one motion. So I will go ahead and list the ones that could be taken in one motion. So under new business item 3.1, it would be the Touch a Truck event from the Norwood Department of Public Works, which would be a request for an event on Saturday, May 17th, 2025, from 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM in the DPW yard. Any holds on that? And then item 3.2, which is the annual kids' summer concert series from the Norwood Junior Women's Club. This is a request to use the Town Common and the Dempsey Bandstand on the following dates. These would be Tuesdays, July 15th, July 22nd, and July 29th, from 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM, expecting approximately 100 attendees. And then they have rain dates as well, which would be Tuesday, August 12th and 19th. And then I'm going to hold 3.3 and 3.4. And then 3.5, we'll have a little discussion. But then if we go down to 3.6, we have our list of April licenses for 2025. And so I don't think I need to read that full list in, right? Everyone has the list before them. So do I have a motion for any action from the board on items 3.1, 3.2, 3.6?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Plaskos. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lane? Right, any further discussion? If not, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, unanimous approval for items 3.1, 3.2, and 3.6. And then we still have five minutes. So we can go down to, why don't we work ahead and we'll go down to memoranda?
Motion filed.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sad. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Unanimous as well. All right, still making good time.
Ma'am Chairman, I would kind of suggest, if the parties are here, we could probably have the appointment early.
Sure. Let's see if they're ready. Welcome. Hello, take a seat. Thank you, welcome. If you could please state your name for the viewers at home and for the public record and then...
You can apply.
No, no, you can sit, you can sit. No need to surprise.
My name is Lisa Peguero. I'm the CEO and producer of Bay Film, which is located over here in Norwood. And there is Judy Fiole.
Norwood resident and friend of Victor, who is known him from our son's Norwood youth soccer days.
Wow, excellent, excellent.
Part of the project.
Yes, so I volunteered to help him out.
Great. And then why don't you go ahead and, you can go ahead and describe the further purpose here. We've received the application and details, and this is, again, for the benefit of public record.
Yeah, it's, we're actually going to film a movie based on a true story of a soccer team that happened over here in Norwood. Despite the girls', you know, size, skills, level and all this, with an orthodontist coach, they go in to get their weakness and become, make a strength. You know, they ended up winning the league. And that's, this is like Norwood, we're doing everything with Norwood. One of the tracks for the film is actually going to be collaboration with one of the residents from Norwood, who's been graduating this year from Berkeley College. We already have eight actors from Norwood. And, yeah, looking forward. Plus, like, we're bringing the business to Norwood. I used to live in Norwood. My kids did all the programs over here. So what we want is to, you know, Hollywood usually come in, they'll grab any spot, film, and leave. What we want is to get the story actually from the town and, you know, bring it out there, give a chance to the locals, because it's a lot of people with talent over here.
Yeah. Thanks. All right, I'll go ahead and open it up for questions or comments from the board.
I guess I'll start.
Okay, Mr. Sad.
I want to thank you for doing this. We did have a team in Norwood with Coach Fogfallen and Coach Sad called the Cyclones. And we had a very good team back then. Nobody beat us. But good luck with it. Contact those folks. And it's great to see the girl soccer and anything that's coming from Norwood sports being on the front line with. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Could you give us, I know it's outlined here, so could you give us an overview of the planning schedule for filming? The dates and the timeline that you need?
I actually, I looked for two weeks, because weather-wise. It might rain one day, you know, it might be postponed. But we're looking, I think we got it in the morning. We'll be doing like 7:00 in the morning or 8:00 in the morning to 2:00 PM, because the field were busy for the afternoon. And we're looking at September, September and-ish, because some of the actors, they might be on college. So we're working with that time. But like I said, it could be in those two weeks, like, is we're going to film.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen, have we confirmed with the rec department? I mean, it seems like that's a time of the year where the field would be relatively unused during that period.
That's correct, Mr. Donnelly. So we did consult with Sam and also the high school soccer teams, and they use the soccer fields at Father Max for practice on the weekdays, but from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. So the morning to 2:00 PM timeframe that Victor's describing is okay.
How much equipment would you be bringing onto the fields in terms of hardware and things?
Actually, we're bringing this drum, and the cameras will be body cameras. We don't want to, it pretty much for the games, it's going to be body cameras. And if we set up a tripod, we usually put like a base, you put a tripod. But nothing to rail on the field, nothing to on the grass and all that stuff.
Would you mind telling us a little bit about yourself in terms of your experience in filmmaking and how you come to Norwood?
Myself, well, I, how's that? I moved to Norwood, geez. The wildlife. My sister-in-law used to live over here.
Okay.
And my kids, you know, time to go to school, to go to school. So we like the school program over here, so we ended up moving to Norwood. Most of the time, I stay here for a while, I coach in the town. And also, I even coach on the high school, the boys, JB. And like I said, I love the town. Something that I forgot is, sorry to change the topic, a minimum of 2% of the profit will go to Norwood youth soccer. That's our main goal is to, we want to help that program. But myself, in film, I always, like, music and film are my two, how people say, the other side of my story that nobody knows. Everybody knows me for everything else, but no one knows what I've been doing. Like, on the side, I've been involved in music. I manage a group back in '05. We went in a couple, we went international, went to open up for two big singers for Christmas Eve in another country. And been in music and film, I always loved film. I did some acting back in high school, many, many years back. And always been, like I said, besides my other career, that's like my passion. Plus, we are, we're getting, we've been working on this project for two and a half years, because I've been after a director. He's coming from Japan. He's actually from United States, but he's been in Japan for 12 years. He's working for Japan Hollywood. So he's trying to bring his name back here, so we are, he's going to, he committed to come in. I kind of create, create the group together. I'm the guy that put all the pieces together, and we got our hands in the script, and we got everything set up, and I don't know if it has...
Thank you, thank you. And just one more question, Matt.
Sure.
So it's just, just for my own, it's a business I don't understand. So you do the filming, where does the filming go from there? How do you, how do you, what's the next step after you've completed your filming?
As soon as we finish the production, the next step is we go for promotion. You know, while we're getting the film ready, all the, all the step, and we bring it, this different crew, we got to bring it to the one that's going to now do all the editing and all that stuff. So when it's ready, we're going to be showcasing in Dedham Community Theater. I already spoke with them. And it might also go in Legacy Place. This film, it has a couple of towns involved on it, because, you know, they were, it was a travel team. So there is a couple of towns that are going to get involved also. But my main team is to do everything, majority in Norwood.
Thank you, Victor.
You are.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Plasko.
Mr. Rosen, you said to check with the schedule with the high school soccer. How about your soccer? Don't they use those fields as well?
So.
They consulted with?
I believe the answer is yes to that, so I know Sam, Sam White, who was, he was thinking about staying for this, but he had to leave. They were consulted. I know that originally, I believe, the idea was to use the high school, but that ended up not happening, so then they went to Father Max instead as a possible. So I believe they have checked with all of the sports and that this timeframe in the morning, it works for this location in September, because school's in session in that timeframe.
And did you say you're going to be using actors? You're not using like the students, right?
Well, with the casting, we're in Norwood. We did two casting. And we just picked some of the actors that came in, I mean, the person that came in that they, but no, I opened up for everyone. That was the main goal. That's what the main thing, I'm the producer, so I got more to pick and choose than, you know, who's, who's, we're going to favor. So our favorite was Norwood first, so we did the two casting. And I believe they sent it to the high school also, Drama Club. I sent the information to the person that was going to send it to them, as far as I know.
Okay, my next question might go on with what Mr. Donnelly just asked, and maybe I didn't quite hear the answer, but what's the purpose of the film? Is this for a film festival? It's going to be a major motion picture? Is it made for the Hallmark Channel? What's the purpose of making the film?
This film is to be, what can I say, it's pretty much, our main goal is to show that you can do anything you want, doesn't matter how your body image is, is promoting. Sorry, it's the word is, and plus, but it's inspiring people, that, you know, this, everybody has kids. I mean, we have kids. There's some kids that we have that they're either, they think they cannot do the sport because they are a little chubby. Some of the things they are, in my case, I have a kid that has some issues. And I was telling them, you can do anything. And we saw with this group, when we got this script, is they were on the norms of sport. They're not supposed to be playing the game. And they, in the first year, they became second place. In the second year, they won the division facing Needham and all the towns that have club players. So that our goal is to show, it's more family, it's like a home.
I think I understand your motive and what you're trying to show and use the film for. But how do you get that out? Like, it's not made for the Hallmark Channel, it's...
No, no, distributed.
People decide they like your story?
Distributed, yes. It's even, there is a person who said that it might go to Netflix. But Netflix has some clause that I don't think I'm going to work with it, because... some clause that I don't think I'm gonna work with it because there is, we're gonna have a sponsor. Our main goal is any sponsor business come in, we promote them. Netflix don't wanna see any sponsor because if they don't work with them, they don't wanna show it. But the movie is gonna be on Amazon, it's gonna be on a stream channel, a stream channel.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lane?
Good luck.
Thank you.
And I hope when everything is done, maybe you could do some kind of screening, maybe at the Norwood Theater or one of the schools or something like that.
Oh, no, I was looking for the community theater over here.
Yeah.
I mean, that was way back, that's my, I checked with Dara, get, Dara can be the okay. I'm sorry, but the community theater over here, I think it was booked for two years, they say, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Well, definitely keep us posted on how everything goes.
Yeah, no, I'll definitely do. They're, like I said, as soon as we're done, it's gonna be movie theaters.
That's great.
Yeah.
Mr. Plasko, to answer your question, Norwood soccer is in the spring, not the fall. So that's definitely using the field.
Good. Thank you. And you're right, the time of day is gonna avoid a lot of those.
Yeah.
The central conflicts anyhow.
Yes, thank you.
Quick question, at the Father Max Field, which I'm pretty familiar with, are you gonna paint a big Mustang on the field like at the high school and promote the Norwood community?
That was one thing I wanna do in the high school.
Yeah.
But like I say, it's gonna be, we are, I know, I'm not gonna be able to do it. I'm not gonna paint the Mustang, but the kids will be wearing the, the uniform with the Mustang, you know, the Norwood uniform.
Can we get you up there for a clip at Norwood High for like one game, big game, like the championship game? We love Norwood Mustang blue.
That would be.
Oh, no, believe me, I, oh, I'm a big fan. Like I say, I was, I was a coach on JB for, I think I did it for two years. Unfortunately, I couldn't because work and, and health couldn't let me continue, but yeah.
All right. Well, good luck with all your endeavors and if you need any help, call us.
Thank you.
If you need a cameo for a guy walking a dog, I got some.
Or if you need to cast a member of the Board of Selectmen, I've got five suggestions for you.
I mean, like I say, it's.
I'm looking at getting some stock images, some stock shots of the, of the high school with the, with the Mustang logo, that might actually be helpful. So something to consider.
To consider, yeah.
Yeah.
We can, I can sure we can put you in touch with people who can tell you about the logo and how, how it can be painted, if you go that direction, you can.
I mean, we're low, low budget films, so you know, doing this and we already got a couple of, so.
There were a couple of items that our staff have made a recommendation for that I want to run through, just to make sure that these, these are things that we believe we'd like to require as part of this, but I wanna make sure that that's still amenable for your work. So one of them is we would be interested in having you do a notification to the abutters that surround the Father Max so that they know what time the filmings are taking place.
Yes.
And then another thing is once you have the detailed hourly schedule, the filming, then we can issue an invoice and then that invoice would need to be paid before the filming would commence, if that sounds all right. Another thing is we would like to see some proof that you've obtained the right permissions to fly the drones for filming purposes. And then the last one is just to provide a single point of contact that the police department, the fire department, the recreation department and the general managers office can, can reach, like who the single point of contact is. And so if those conditions all sound amenable to you, we wanted to make sure that we clarified that. Sounds good?
Yeah. No, that, I'll say like a month before we go in, I'll have to get all the stuff ready to go.
Yeah, a month ahead would be excellent. All right, well, does anybody have any further questions or comments? If otherwise, then I will entertain the pleasure of the board is.
Motion to approve.
Right, so a motion to approve made by Mr. Sad. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. The show will go on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Likewise.
Good luck, good luck.
All right. All right, so that should be the last of our appointments, so now we can flip back to business that may have discussion. So let's go to item 3.3, which is the LIP draft policy. And I believe, Mr. Plasko, you can probably speak to this best since you're the one doing the work.
All right, I'll be a little bit repetitive, but just to bring us to where we are, the board has been approached at least twice now in the recent past for consideration of local initiative program, housing developments. And while we had a guideline from the state as to how the entire process unfolds, we didn't have, don't have anything as a formal policy as to what the Board of Selectmen will do or look for and want to have presented to them in consideration of any proposals that might come before us. So I tried to put together a draft for the board to review and actually found a lot of this online from some other towns that have already done it and just tried to take the best of all theirs and line it up with traditions and things here in Norwood. And that's how I came up with this draft. There's a couple of questions in the draft that, asking the board, what do you think about this or what do you think about that? And if we get those comments back, which I have received some from Selectman Donnelly, then I would put it back into a formal final version for the board to finally accept as a policy. Of course, the other side of the coin could be the board just doesn't think such a policy is necessary and doesn't wanna go any further, or wants to make some kind of major change but doesn't want a policy. So happy to continue to work on this and bring it to a final, unless there's no interest in it, which I of course would like to know now, so we don't spend any more time on it.
All right, well, why don't we go ahead and start with Mr. Lane for discussion?
Thank you, Chairman Groh. Thank you, Mr. Plasko, for putting this together. And I just had a couple of questions, but more like conversation pieces. So I know in going back and looking at some of the state regulations, you know, there's, there's a lot of, this is a simplified version of the process of how we would potentially deal with someone with a LIP application, which I think regardless of the details, I think it's good to have this policy just because it creates some certainty over the process. I think the last one that we did, there was a little back and forth about, you know, where we stood in the process versus maybe the planning board or the zoning board, and I think this makes things clearer, so I appreciate that. One of the things that I was reading about, and you might have more insight on this, from the, the state regs about talking about a LIP, that it's, there's a piece that talks about age restricted housing, if you're familiar with this.
I'm sorry, what?
Age restricted housing.
Yep.
And it says, you know, you could potentially have LIP approval for a project with age restricted housing upon showing an actual need and marketability with the municipality. So I kinda took that as to, and we've talked about this before, I know Mr. Sad has brought up, you know, senior housing or, is there something that we can do internally to, to produce that kind of information to show that there's a need, to be helpful to potentially to any developer who might want to be doing some sort of senior housing project?
I'm not sure about as part of the policy.
Yeah.
Um.
My, yeah, it's sort of.
Just mentioning it in the policy lets them know that it's something the town would be interested in, and seen pursued.
Yeah.
And that we would give extra credit, if you will, to considering such developments.
Yeah.
There's some information that if someone is going to, a developer's going to propose 55 or housing, or actually the town can try to convince a developer to do that, and it is actually the burdens on the town to give them statistics and information so we could work with the planning department or simply looking back at the U.S. Census.
Yeah.
As well as the Housing Authority and compile that kind of information so that we have it available. The only problem with that is we're not expecting these every day.
Right.
And after a while, it'll get old and have to be refreshed.
Yeah.
So I think it's something we would have to consider closer to the time of actually receiving an application.
Okay.
But, but yes, there's information that can be gathered that would work in that direction.
So internally, we could compile that. I think that would be good sort of to dovetail with the work that you've done here. But in, in terms of the document, I think it's a good one and I think it's, it's straightforward, lays out the process in a understandable way and I think, you know, it's, it's a transparent document, so I appreciate that.
I had the kind of same line Bill was, if, if it's in a G-zone or an S-zone, then somebody wanted to build senior housing or 55, that would come under the body of the select to push it forward, but I don't know if that legally, if there's a, in the town bylaw for the planning board or the bylaw for the building inspector, where it might just say no. For senior housing, Matt, when we were talking before about if a developer wanted to come in and put senior housing on Hamilton Circle where I live, Passamau Street, and knock down a house or two and just put a 30-track senior housing low level.
In theory, yes, we can, because remember, LIP is a friendly 40B and 40B, if you approve it, supersedes all the local zoning.
So we don't need to put any zoning in there?
No.
In this, this here draft?
We would have to find the details that we're ready to approve it and endorse it.
Yep.
And that endorsement goes to the state that reviews, then it comes back to the zoning board for final details, but as far as it being a zone where you wouldn't necessarily expect it to be, if we found that appropriate, we could approve it here. Because it, it supersedes the local zone.
Thank you.
Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I like the idea of the policy personally. I think when, when I, in Selectman Groh, I came on board, I think, you know, a LIP process was not documented, so there was a lot to learn when we encountered the applicant that came before us last year, earlier this year rather. And I think this puts some clarity around how it works and what our role is, so I appreciate the work that's done. And I did send Mr. Plasko's just some observations that, you know, the board might wanna make some decisions around when and under what circumstances would we consider a, a public hearing is necessary versus perhaps a, a proposal that's very small and perhaps wouldn't need that. But I think with some clarity around that, then I think, I think we'd be, be good to go, so. Thank you, Mr. Plasko, for putting forward the effort to put together a policy.
So with that information, if it's okay with the chair, I'll continue to work those thoughts in here, see if I can make some of those a little clearer and get it back to the board to see if they like the final draft.
Yeah, chair is in favor of this. I think it's important for some of the processes we have that are sort of, everyone knows it in their heads, I'd like to see more of that get down on paper. It's always beneficial when everyone is sort of of the same understanding about, you know, different policies or procedure, even, you know, members of the public, so that they sort of understand where the board's coming from and why we will or won't, you know, make a decision. It's all laid out. So I think this is a move in that direction and that's really good, so I'm definitely interested in the work continuing. And then my only, I only had one small question. I'll get you any typos that I spot in terms of the, the notification, the 300-foot radius, was that taken from existing language somewhere or was there a reason that you chose further down here in this paragraph here where it talks about owners within a 300-foot radius being sent notice? Was that a reason for that?
That 300 feet was mentioned in one of the samples I saw. A 300 feet is like in our, in our zoning, in a typical practice.
Okay, great.
And I think that's what we did for 923, 929 as well.
Okay, good. I just wanna make sure that.
It's just kind of a standard.
Yeah, that you, you felt like that number was a good number and you were happy with it and.
I just, I use it because it's a standard. People wanna chew away with it or add it or make it longer, a longer distance, but that's kind of a standard, so that's why I use it.
Perfect. Excellent, all right. And that, that was my only question.
Okay.
So, all right. Do we need to take a formal motion to direct Mr. Plasko to continue the work or?
Why don't we just accept the motion to table for now and then?
Yeah.
When it comes back, we'll deal with it.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion to table.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. All right, so that will take care of item 3.3. That allows us to move to item 3.4. This is the Housing Authority vacancy. We have a notification from the town clerk regarding a vacancy of the Norwood Housing Authority. Do I need to actually read the notification into the record?
No.
Okay. But we do need to set up a joint meeting with the Housing Authority. And then we also will have a period of time where we're accepting applicants and both from those that have reached out to the board or to the Housing Authority. Mr. Rosen, did you have a further comment on this item?
No, this is just a, thank you, Madam Chair, this is a unique vacancy in that it actually requires a joint meeting. And I do believe in Mr. Barnicle's letter that the Housing Authority's next regular meeting is April 24th, so just a couple of nights from now, but he wants to be able to explain to his board the process, just as we are doing here tonight. So I'm assuming this meeting will take place in May, most likely the joint meeting as perhaps part of Selectman.
Yeah, Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. I did have a conversation with Mr. Barnicle, executive director of the Housing Authority, and if it meets with the board's approval and guidelines following the points that the town clerk has pointed out in the process to make this appointment. They already have four applicants and we would announce right now, anyone watching this who thinks they might be interested in filling a position of commissioner of the Norwood Housing Authority, can get applications in, letter of interest to either the Housing Authority or the Board of Selectmen, short notice however, by May 6th. At that time, we need to announce and post a meeting where the appointment will be made at least one week. And since we're meeting every other week or only a couple of times a month, and we're meeting early this, in May because of the town meeting schedule, that joint meeting would be the 27th of May. And the only question that would be left is if many more applications were to come in, whether we're gonna hand them on our meeting or have a separate meeting, whether we're gonna interview people or just work off the resumes, but we can determine that between now and the 6th and announce on the 6th, presumably the May 27th will make the appointments. So if that works with everybody, I checked it out with Mr. Barnicle and from thereon, it seems to work.
Great.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes.
A motion, a motion for the May 6th for the hearing or the review?
No, well, May, May 6th, they have applicants.
A deadline.
Have their applications, letters of interest into the board. Then on May 6th, we'll set the date.
Right, okay.
All right, so motion for the applicants to be in by May 6th, made by Mr. Sad, I have a second, Mr. Donnelly. All right, all in favor of Mr. Sad's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. All right, so we can move down to item 3.5. We have a number of annual appointments and reappointments for discussion and vote. One question I had was for the Board of Appeal, these are both reappointments or are we choosing between the two?
I think they're both reappointments.
Okay, great, excellent. So we can either take them one by one or if we feel very comfortable with the slate, we could possibly even take it in one motion. I'll, I'll start with discussion and I think that'll kind of dictate whether we go for one fell swoop or break them out.
I'm comfortable with a motion to, since these are all reappointments, to just take them all into one motion, Madam Chair, if that's amenable to the board members.
Mr. Lane?
The only question I had, the only appointment that didn't have the length of term on it was Mr. Plasko's. And how long is that appointment for?
Three years, yeah, three.
Okay, three years.
Three years.
And you're, I'm assuming you wanna keep doing it?
Sure.
I think, yeah, these are great, I think we should just approve.
Madam Chair, make a motion to, to approve all the appointments as detailed in item 3.5.
All right, motion made by Mr. Donnelly, we'll second, we'll second with Mr. Lane.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Otherwise, all in favor? Otherwise, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Unanimous. All right, that is the last of new business, so we can move down to manager's update. We have, uh, Mr. Rosen filling in for Mr. Bazuko today, and doing a great job.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Uh, so, as noted, General Manager Bazuko is on vacation this week, well deserved. Uh, he did want us, uh, send along a special happy birthday to, uh, Jim Schmidt, who's turning 102 years old. Happy birthday, Jim, from Tony. Um, a couple just small things, um, earlier today, I know several of you were involved, but we had, uh, 10 of Aaron Guilde's descendants, multiple generations, obviously, were visiting Norwood as part of the overall 250th anniversary of this area, Lexington and such, um, but they did come through today to Norwood, and we had 10 of them visiting from all over the world, actually, Texas, Japan, Atlanta, Connecticut, I believe Rhode Island, and, um, they, we, we did a nice tour of, uh, Old Parish Preservation, uh, the Old Parish Cemetery with the Old Parish Preservation volunteers. We went up to the library, uh, they got to see the actual stone there that marks the, uh, a site where, um, Aaron Guilde dropped his plow and, and marched, and, uh, just several other, um, notable locations in town. Um, I just wanted, it was awesome, it was a good time, uh, special thanks, I don't wanna miss anybody here, but there were so many people who were involved, um, the library, the Old Colonial Cafe, um, the COA bus driver, Ellen, who actually drove us around, um, Patty Fanning, John Grove, the Old Parish Preservation volunteers, and, and members of the Historic Commission that all participated in the tour and festivities, and also members of the Board of Selectmen were here, so I know that the Guilde family was, uh, very enthusiastic, and they, they're so happy to see their name on so many buildings in town, streets, uh, medical center, that, just the Guilde family is, is, is well represented here. They got a kick out of, um, Aaron being on to the seal, the stained glass in Memorial Hall, uh, our business cards, everything, so, uh, we wanna say thank you for, for them to thinking of us as part of their, uh, tour of this area, and, um, glad they had a good time, and we'll have some pictures out there for people to see. Um, other than that, we, um, we also got the town meeting materials, uh, were mailed out today to town meeting members, uh, just as a reminder, town meeting begins the evening of May 12th, and next week, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, for those town meeting members, there are information sessions each day, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, at the Norwood High School in the, um, the second floor, the, uh, the room up there, it's like a televised, you know, large room, um, but if you've done, if you've seen it before, you, we'll point you in the right direction when you arrive next week. Um, other than that, I think that's all I have, I'm just returning from vacation myself, so, uh, thank you for having me tonight.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. Rosen before we move on to Selectmen's agenda? All right, if not, why don't we start on my left tonight? We will start with Mr. Lane.
Oh, thank you, Chairman Gro. Um, just the only thing of note, um, some of you may have seen, a long-time firefighter, Mike McDonough, uh, passed away on, um, Sunday. Um, Mike was the, actually, the first person I met in Norwood when I moved here, he was my next-door neighbor for about 10 years, and, um, just a great guy, um, great firefighter, um, but I think he was, he was a really great dad, and I think that was probably the thing he was most proud of. I'm sure you, you guys all know Mike, um, but my, uh, thoughts and prayers go to his wife, Barbara, and their kids, so...
Absolutely.
That's it.
Thank you. All right, we will move to my right with Mr. Plasko.
Nothing further, Steve.
All right. With Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair, so, thank you, Mr., Mr. Rosen, for the update, and, um, Aaron Guilde, um, descendants from all over the world, including from Norwood as well.
That's right.
Ms. Margaret Johnson was there as well. Um, I have just, uh, upcoming events, uh, on this weekend, um, in addition to the, the fishing derby on Saturday. Uh, Sunday, the 27th, is Earth Day, so, um, folks will be out and about, um, on Sunday morning, uh, doing cleanings of, uh, area parks and school yards and whatever, I knew I'll be at the, uh, ND location. And in the afternoon, they'll be on the Town Common, uh, from 12 noon, I think, to about 2:00, I'm not sure, 2:00 o'clock or so, um, there'll be, uh, events, not events, but tables, um, a variety of community organizations, um, on the Common. I know I'm, I'm at a table, uh, for planning and, uh, comprehensive plan in, in the composting program, so it's a great event in the morning, helping out to clean up the town, and, uh, and in the afternoon, just to, to meet, um, I think upwards of 20 different organizations that will be out and about on the Common, and we, knock on wood, hopefully we'll have, um, uh, good weather for that. Um, I spoke, uh, a few meetings ago about, um, the idea of, um, the board, uh, contacting the chairs of the Finance Commission and, and the School Committee regarding an idea of, of, uh, I'm calling it, for lack of a better term at this point, perhaps forming a structural, structural deficit working group, with membership from, from, um, the three boards to, um, perhaps sometime after the, um, end of, of the town meeting to, um, have a, a representation from each of those boards, working with our finance teams from, from general government, as well as the school, to kind of paint, starting, paint, painting the picture of, um, how would our FY '27 budget be funded, um, using, um, recurring revenue and not relying on, on free cash or other reserves, so, sort of, an exercise to kind of paint the picture financially in terms of, um, getting a head start to, to how we would, uh, would, would, would do that in the upcoming year, given our financial challenges that we are facing currently. So, I have this draft letter, um, if you would kindly just take a look at it, and perhaps at the, a future meeting, um, you know, one coming up in May, perhaps we can, um, uh, get it out to our colleagues on, on those boards, and perhaps, uh, get some work started early on our financial situation, if you will. So, that's it from me, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, excellent.
Um, I haven't read your letter yet, so I don't even be here, but just based on, off of what you recited, you would look at expanding this, that we're not just looking at next year's budget, but the whole financial picture, so that we see how stable we can make the town's finances for several years to come, so that would include our free cash and everything, how best to, uh, use that, whether it's to balance our budget, whether it's to put it in some special accounts, it's just, it's already been, uh, proposed, but so we have that all, um, all worked in as part of the review?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point, I, I don't think it's, it's, um, called out specifically, but we certainly can, um, add a, a, a additional bullet to cover that.
And I, I think we wanna set this up in a way that it's, like you say, maybe one member of three of those committees and our professional staff to sit down and be a really working group, 'cause otherwise, it somewhat resembles the, um, Townwide Budget Committee.
Right.
That hasn't really been able to quite get a focus on that, so I think a, a more concentrated or single-focused, uh, group could, could work more effectively.
That's exactly the point, and also do it, do we, doing it in, in an earlier timeline so that we're not faced with the constraints. The Budget Balance Committee has a definitive role to play, and that is to plan for the, uh, the upcoming fiscal year budget, where this, this gives us an opportunity to take a little deeper dive into how we would, uh, do that for the upcoming year, as well as, to your point, future years as well. So, point well taken, and certainly that's something we can incorporate, uh, as well as other input that members might have. Thank you, Mr. Plasko, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Mr. Sad?
A couple of things, I wanna shout out to, uh, JSU, my good friend, recovering, best of health. Secondly, um, the Norwood Sportsman's Club is having a fishing derby right after us on May 3rd. I wanna thank all the sponsors of the South Norwood Fishing Derby, Rain or Shine, the duck race is gonna be exciting, uh, there's a lot of fish in there, and, um, this should be a hopefully a, a great event. Last year, we had over 300 people, so if anybody wants to come down and help out, come on on down. And I, as Matt said about, um, McDonough, uh, from the North Walpole Fishing Game Club, and all the members up there, our condolences for the family. Uh, I had the coach, I, I had the pleasure of coaching the kids, and a great family, and I fish off their dock up at New Pond, so, just a great guy, a great family, so my condolences on behalf of the board goes out to his family, so, uh, that's it, Madam Chair, and everybody, enjoy the weekend.
Thanks. All right, so the items I have on my list, um, one is a small thing, uh, which is, I'm considering making a slight change to seating, uh, just to make it a little easier for folks to hear, make it a little easier for the chair, uh, in terms of balancing the number of people at the table, um, so I didn't wanna try that right away, since I want us to get used to consent agenda a little first, but, uh, that's, so that'll be the next small change we experience in the upcoming meeting. Uh, another thing that we'll be doing, I will send out a list for everyone of our current committee assignments, uh, as board members, and as well as any committee or other, uh, areas that normally have representation from the board that are currently lacking it. I don't believe we have any lacking right now, I think we've done a pretty good job of trying to cover all the bases, uh, but the point would be the next time we meet, between now and next time, everyone to have an opportunity to relook at the list of options, make sure that you're still happy with your committee assignments, if there's a committee that you've had an interest in and, and someone's currently serving, maybe have a, a little chat with them, see if they'd be willing to trade, um, or if someone has one that they're, they're wanting to replate, just let, uh, you can reach out to me, um, but the idea will be that we'll have everyone on their committee assignments for the upcoming year. Uh, and then my last little bit is just a little bit of commemoration, uh, this month is Autism Acceptance Month, so I like to think of it as Autism Appreciation Month. Um, I'm just always very grateful for all of the autistic people in my life and in the community. Uh, fun bit of trivia, the multi-billion dollar Pokemon franchise was invented by an autistic person, so I just, I really appreciate all of our, our autistic, uh, fellow residents, and, uh, it's just really great to have a month like this where we can really focus on making sure that they continue to be the integral part of the community that they